Can we all stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So we're all here for the public hearing for the master plan for Williams Lake project. But just before we start, I would just like to ask if anybody has any community events they would like to announce because we are going to do a little town business afterwards. Okay, if you have anything you'd like to drop off or a notice for next week, that's fine too. Who's going to do the presentation? Larry? Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Town of Rosendale, notice of public hearing. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Rosendale on October 21st, 2013 at 7:30 PM at the Rosendale Community Center, 1055 Route 32, Rosendale, Ulster County, New York, to hear all interested persons on the proposed Hudson River Valley Resorts LLC master plan. Please take further notice that a copy of said proposed master plan is available at Town Hall 424 Main Street, Rosendale, New York during normal business hours by order of the Rosendale Town Board dated October 9th, 2013, Deborah Tierney, Town Clerk.
Thank you, Town Clerk, Deborah Tierney. A couple of rules before we get started. I'd like to ask everyone that comes up to say your name and where you're from, and we're going to ask that you speak, keep your speaking two, three minutes. I will be using a timer and gently remind you that you've used your time. So Larry, you're going to start. We're going to start with a presentation for the master plan so that you can get an overview of the project, and then we'll let the public have their opportunity to speak. We have a sign-up sheet. I will start, we'll switch the sheets back and forth, so I'll start with the sheet I have here, and if anybody is interested in speaking, you should sign up to the sheet, please. Larry?
Okay, good evening, Madam Supervisor, members of the board. My name is Larry Wolinski. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Jacob Witz and Goetz, and I have been counsel on the HRVR project, primarily in connection with the secret process and land use matters. And we will be making a presentation tonight, but I'm just one of three who will actually be speaking. With me tonight is also Rick Steele, the project principal, and Tim Allred, who's project manager. I believe many of you here know these folks. Also, we have Brian, and he stepped away. Oh, there he is. And Ilana as well. My main function this evening is to try and set the procedural context for where we are in the process, where we've come, because I think that's always a good way to start, and it provides context for the master plan hearing. Of course, we're here tonight after a, what is, amounts to about a six-year review process. Much of that time, if not most of that time, has been consumed with one of the most exhaustive environmental reviews ever conducted in the Hudson Valley. And fortunately, the secret process was successfully completed this July when the DEC issued findings authorizing the project essentially to move forward on environmental grounds. Thereafter, the BLCPDA, Benno Water Lakes Conservation Plan Development Area zoning went through its own exhaustive evolution, and that culminated in the Town Board's adoption of its own finding statement and enactment of the BLCPDA zoning on October 2nd. Shortly thereafter, a complete master plan application was submitted by HRVR, and on October 9th, the master plan application was referred to the Ulster County Planning Department, and the hearing was scheduled for this evening. The master plan application that is the subject of the hearing tonight has also been referred to the Town of Rosendale Planning Board, and I believe is concurrently under review by that body. Once the master plan, for the public's benefit, once the master plan hearing is closed, the Town Board has an additional, up to 62 days, to make a decision on whether to approve, disapprove, or approve the master plan with conditions. After that is undertaken, the process is now concluded. There is still the effort of seeking site plan approval from the planning board. So we're still not there. We're a lot closer than we've been, and we've made a very diligent effort to give you folks a very complete package for this master plan process. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Rick Steele, who's going to talk about some of the visioning for the project and provide further context for tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Good evening. My name is Rick Steele. A little taller than Larry. I'd like to thank you, members of the community, guests, and members of the Town Board for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Larry mentioned, I am managing member of Hudson River Valley Resorts. We are a development company that's comprised of several investors who share a common core value of social and environmental responsibility. We have experience developing real estate. We've developed several large communities and numerous projects. We believe Williams Lake is a perfect property for us. It's a unique opportunity to create a 21st century tourist destination 90 miles north of New York City, a retreat to nature experience that is hours closer than the Adelundex, yet builds on the regional assets, natural beauty, farm and table food, arts, and existing resorts. We seek to sustainably redevelop presently idle Williams Lake property as a resort, spa, and residential community, which is focused on the environment, health and wellness, and outdoor recreation. The project will honor and protect the property's rich history, its unique environmental sensitivity, and tradition of public benefit. We have five main development principles. Number one, integrate the redevelopment into the historic context of the land and the community. Continue the historic land use of the site as a resort and a tourist destination. Connect the rail trail through the property for public access. Protect, preserve, and interpret the cement erith historic features on the site. Second, to respect and protect the natural resources and beauty of the property. Towards this goal, the project will add more than 100 acres to the current 400 acres in permanent conservation easement to protect the land forever. We will work collaboratively with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to protect, research, and support the local bat population. We will place deed restrictions on the land that will maintain a forested landscape and protect natural resources for the years to come. We seek to be a sustainable enterprise, and this will encompass two separate components. First, to be economically sustainable, and second, to implement sustainable practices so that this project can be a model of environmentally progressive development. Regarding economic stability and sustainability, this enterprise must be successful. A failed project benefits no one. The enterprise must be diversified in its revenue sources to include a resort, a spa, and a residential component. We expect to generate very significant positive fiscal and economic benefits for the town and community. We will create local jobs. We will be environmentally sustainable. This will be a LEED-certified hotel and spa. We will employ geothermal and solar energy systems. The hotel will have green roofs, gray water recycling, low-flow toning fixtures, and so on. The sewer treatment for all facilities and all structures on the site will be to IS/EL standards, intermittent stream effluent limits. Basically, the water that comes out of the sewer system will be able to support aquatic life with no additional added water. Four, we expect to connect with and become a part of the community. We have been a part of the community for more than five years. Our manager, Tim Allred, lives in the community, raises his family here, and through his efforts, we have sponsored numerous community activities. Bike races, fundraisers for local charities, children's event, public safety training events, bat protection seminars, and so on. We have recently opened the rail trail, which hopefully many of you had an opportunity to utilize. We will continue participating in local events, and we will hire locally and source locally whenever reasonably possible. All this will be documented prior to our approved site plans. Five, we will foster health and wellness. This is a pedestrian-focused design. The project will include miles of walking, biking, hiking trails for resort guests, residents, and the public. The Wellness Center will protect the mind, body, and spirit, and we will have community organic vegetable gardens, swimming, canoeing, and fishing in Williams Lake. Our general timeline for the project going forward, assuming master plan approval proceeds rapidly, we expect to have a detailed design and present a site plan application shortly, begin demolition of old buildings and infrastructure next year with structures in place ready to be sold or utilized in 2015. In conclusion, thank you for the opportunity to become a part of the community, and we look forward to continuing to operate and develop this property in the same tradition as the Williams family has for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick and Larry. My name is Tim Allred. I'm the project manager for the Williams Lake project. I'd like to thank the Town Board for the opportunity to present a summary of our master development plan. You have the submission, it looks like, in front of you, but I will try my best to give a brief summary using the materials on the wall. As you know, and as was mentioned, we've worked very long and hard through the secret process to ensure that the project minimizes potential environmental impacts, avoids and mitigates those as well. The master development plan, which is projected on the screen, is the same plan submitted for the final environmental impact statement and approved by the DEC and the Town in their secret findings. Shortly, I would like to describe the changes made to the plan between the draft DEIS and the final DEIS, which addressed comments we received from the public and from regulatory agencies. I think it's important for us to update you, the board, in terms of how the project has shifted in our listening to public comments. As you know, our business model, and as Rick just mentioned, our business model is to redevelop the site as a modern, sustainable tourist destination with an associated residential community. It is our belief that a thoughtful real estate development with high-quality, beautiful architecture, with a resort that specializes in delicious local food, that offers outstanding programming, where guests will experience the outdoors, appreciate natural resources, and learn practices that promote wellness, a resort that employs the latest green technologies and sustainable practices, that commits to sourcing jobs and materials from Rosendale, Ulster County, and the Hudson Valley, and creates enormous net positive fiscal benefits for the town, the local schools, and the county, well, we believe that this business model will work and that the new resort will once again be an anchor destination to bring tourists to Rosendale and continue to attract home buyers that appreciate the beauty and history of this area. Already, we have received multiple expressions of interest, mostly from residents of the Hudson Valley, to purchase a home in the future resort community. I'm told by Brian just today that in the past week or so, we are beginning to receive an email every day, sometimes two emails per day, with interest in new homes. Let me now show you, if I can. This poster here is just showing the entire development parcel. It's a reminder, everything in the dark green and light green is the property. 779 acres. The northern dark green section, we call the existing conservation easement, and that 400-plus acres was protected by Anita Peck in 1999. It's held by the Ronda Fasocas Land Conservancy. And this dark green to the south is the 100-plus acres that we will put into easement as soon as the DEC issues its final permits for the bats. And this southern portion is what we, what's known as the development area. So Brian has set me up here. This is the development plan from the draft environmental impact statement. Maybe a little bit hard to see from where you're sitting, but there were several major changes that we made in response to public comments and working with the DEC. In the DEIS version of the plan, there were 160 homes, and six or seven homes were located near this pond here, and another six or seven in this general area. We call it rail trail homes and the baitfish homes. Those have been eliminated or relocated, as has a parking area which is behind a kiln wall, and that has been moved, as well as a yoga studio and teahouse. All of the development that had been proposed essentially east of the rail trail has been moved or eliminated in negotiation, we'll say, with the DEC out of concerns for the bat habitat. We decided and worked with them for a long time that the best answer was to be conservative and simply move all of that development off or eliminate it. The modifications that I'm highlighting are in your submission, pages 14 and 15. The housing count has, as such, reduced from 160 in this plan, which is the DEIS. Brian, could you? I can do it. Think if we do that. So this is the current plan, which is for the final environmental impact statement. The housing that had been east of the rail trail, the yoga studio, the parking area, has all been moved. In this new plan, revised plan, the housing count is 154 units, where it was 160. Of those 154, 12 housing units will be dedicated to workforce housing, which was really a conversation that Manager Green on the Town Board initiated with us several years ago in the secret process. So really, we're at 142 for-sale residential units, 12 workforce housing units, which will be rented to resort employees at the appropriate rental incomes. I think it's 50 to 80% of area media income. But other changes between the DEIS and the FEIS include responding to a lot of general comments about, from the public, asking for more specific commitments around good stuff that they were hearing. Obviously, the rail trail is open. We've made real commitments there. It's open, and it will be a great resource for the county, for the community, for a long time. We also made more specific commitments around local sourcing, around the conservation land that will be added to public access to the, if you can follow my, to the existing conservation, to the trail network and to the links for the public. We also did more work between the DEIS and the FEIS regarding water supply. We worked hard with the DEC, Ulster County Department of Health, and the New York State Department of Health to agree on conservative water demand numbers, and then we conducted additional studies, bathymetric studies, how much water is in the lake and how does it recharge, and we demonstrated sustainable supply even under extreme drought conditions. All of this is part of the secret findings. We made other modifications, one of which was the wastewater treatment plant. We moved further away from neighbors to accommodate their concerns. We reduced and eliminated impacts to vernal pools and wetlands from this plan to the other plan. We performed additional traffic studies by the New York State Department of Transport's request. So that and many more things. The main point, I think, is that it's been a long process. We listened, we've made concessions, we've made changes to improve the project. So on the screen projected is Appendix G, which is the master development plan. Hard to read up there, but it's the same plan as this one here. On that plan, the, is a development summary. I think I've run through a lot of it, but let me just summarize quickly. The project is two main components, a resort component, commercial and residential. The resort is a 130-room hotel that's unchanged from before. As Rick mentioned, it will be a LEED-certified hotel lodge. LEED, for those who don't know, is a U.S. Green Building Council standard. It's an acronym that stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Development, and it is a very good standard for certifying that buildings have been built to green standards. So the hotel is 130 rooms, a 94-room lodge, 22 hotel villas, which are these guys that come there, and 14 hotel cabins. So there are three types of hotel rooms. There's a spa, 17,000 square feet with an indoor pool, a fitness center, a wellness center. The fitness center is close to where the existing hotel building or the existing spa building is today, and the wellness center is at the south of Williams Lake. Part of the commercial amenities is a first-class trail network for recreation and competitive events. We plan to build on the success of Williams Lake Hotel, where they had many events, mountain biking, cross-country skiing, Nordic races, and continue to build on that success and enhance the trail network. Importantly, the resort and the amenities will be open to everybody. The residential component, I think I already outlined, it's 154 total. There are two types of housing product. There's townhouses, which are in two neighborhoods. One is the existing chalet, part of the old hotel, and the other, we call Point Comfort, is this area, south of Williams Lake. Those are the two townhouse neighborhoods, there are 89 townhomes. The rest of the homes are single-family homes in two neighborhoods, this kind of brownish and this purple color. The hotel, currently, of course, you enter off of Benno Water Road down south near Women's Studio, and in a new project, you will enter from a new main entry road in between the two lakes on Benno Water Road and come into the hotel like that. All of the residential units, whether or not we choose to certify them as LEED buildings, they will all be high-performance, energy-efficient buildings. In terms of infrastructure, the infrastructure, the bulk of the infrastructure for the project is private. It's important to note that the roads, the water supply system, the wastewater treatment facility will be constructed and maintained by the project with no cost to the town. The electric wires and other utilities will be buried. Renewable energy and propane will replace existing aging oil tanks on the site. We will implement green stormwater practices where there are none on the site today, and as mentioned before, the central wastewater system will replace existing aging septic fields that pose a risk to water quality. So I'd like to finish my presentation with a few comments on the project's conformance with the town's comprehensive plan. I've seen, you know, over recent weeks, numerous comments in the papers expressing concerns that the project does not conform with the town's comprehensive plan. I'd like to make two main points to address those concerns. First, as part of the secret process, we included a detailed analysis of the project's conformance with the comp plan as part of the draft impact statement. The three themes of the comprehensive plan are enhancing value, preserving resources, and enhancing the town's fiscal capacity. All of them were evaluated. I think there were total 42 objectives in the comp plan across those three themes, and what we did was we looked one by one at each of those objectives and measured compliance between the project and each objective, and we rated them from 1 to 5, from low to high. And then the public had a chance to comment on that analysis, and the DEC as well. The short of it is that over 85% of those objectives, some of them were not relevant. All of those that were relevant, over 85% of the objectives were rated as having high or moderate to high compliance with the town's comp plan. Second, and finally, I'd just like to highlight one specific objective of the comprehensive plan, and this is from the theme on enhancing value, where it discusses goals for types of economic development. This is from the Rosendale comprehensive plan. It reads, it's goal number F2, and I'll just read it verbatim. It reads, "Tourism that builds upon and is consistent with community character should be encouraged as a form of economic development in Rosendale. The town should take advantage of existing sources of tourism, including existing resorts and activities such as ecotourism." Our master development plan describes the sustainable redevelopment of an existing resort that meant a lot to Rosendale for over 85 years. We're eager to begin the project. Thank you.
No, we're done. All right. So I'd like to let the public speak. If the board's ready to have public comments. your comments under three minutes. And I ask the public to be respectful and not to cheer or applause either during the time that people are speaking or after. Or haggle. The first person on the list is March Gallagher.
Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you and give my personal opinion and comments on the Williams Lake project. I've been looking forward to this day for a long time. I live in Rosendale, as most of you know, and I am here to urge you to approve the master development plan. In 2010, I moved to Rosendale after spending a year and a half renovating a historic structure here. And I have to say, one of the reasons I moved to this community is this project. I knew this project was on the horizon. I came from the town of Sawgerties, where I saw firsthand what a high-end destination tourism property can do for an ailing Main Street. Sawgerties is booming, and I am looking forward to being able to shop during the day on Main Street in Rosendale. I think that will be a result of this project. I have spent a lot of personal time and professional time thinking about the development impact on land use and the economy, and I want to talk a little bit about that. I served as chair of the Ulster County Industrial Development Agency for several years, and in fact, in 2006, I first met with this project. This is a better project than what was presented then, but it has taken far too long to get here. In addition, I later served as Director of Business Services for Ulster County and represented County Executive Mike Hine on the Regional Economic Development Council. And I want to just note that both the county's economic development plan, as well as the regional economic development strategy, identify destination tourism as a priority industry cluster for our region. In fact, tourism is one of four industries identified for the county, and tourism is identified in the Green Circle Strategy of the Regional Economic Development Plan. About $500 million of our county economy is dependent on tourism, and that number has been growing pretty readily over the last several years. So, I just want to identify that it is a major economic driver for our region now. In addition to some of these economic impacts, I want to talk about some of the environmental and comprehensive plan issues involved. I think that this project and this approval of this master development plan fits well within our comprehensive plan. I'm going to give you a couple of snippets why I think that's so. First of all, this is reuse of an existing facility in large part. I know there is new development on the campus, and I understand that there are some new areas that have not been developed in the past. But in order to see reuse of these old properties, you are seeing that investment strategies need to diversify, hence gaming being proposed at the Nevelie. These old resorts are not going to come back unless we rethink resorts of the past with new plans.
I am sorry, but your time is up.
I would have liked to just a little bit of warning. And let me just say also that it protects geological resources and protects open space. I would rather see this kind of cluster development rather than have hodgepodge subdivision of major parcels like this with a multitude of single-family residences. So, I wanted to summarize my comments by saying, I think there's been an environmental exhaustive review process here, that approval of this plan comports with the comprehensive plan, and that this project will be good for the economy. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you didn't get to say anything you want, you can send something in. Okay. Next is Ward Todd.
President Walsh, members of the town board, thanks for this opportunity. Thanks for your leadership. Thanks also to Tim Allred and his team for sticking to it for all these years. We've been watching the process. My name is Ward Todd. I'm the president of the Ulster County Regional Chamber of Commerce. We are proudly the largest business advocacy organization in the region, representing about 1,200 local businesses countywide and beyond. And I am here to speak in favor of the Williams Lake project tonight. Chamber of Commerce strongly believes this project will have a significant impact, not just in your town, but our county and our region's local economy, and be of tremendous value for not just generation after generation of future travel visitors, who we hope will discover Ulster County for the first time and return again and again and again, but for local businesses as well. After years of review, discussion, and debate, the chamber and our members are nearly salivating today at the prospect of seeing hundreds of construction jobs and resort jobs here in our region. Conservatively, it's estimated that construction workers on the Williams Lake project will have over $42 million in disposable income from construction wages. Add the statistical multiplier, a fairly conservative one, to that, and you'll see spending of between $100 and $200 million in our region during the construction project. Once the resort is open and fully operational, the 300 resort employees will have $7 million in disposable income a year. Again, use a multiplier, and those workers will be spending between $35 and $50 million a year. Spending will also come from new residents of the resort and visitors who are going to help keep our local stores and shops and restaurants in business. As I'm sure you're aware, small businesses are the lifeblood of any healthy community. Most are operated by your friends and your neighbors, and many of them right now are struggling to stay open. Additionally, the Williams Lake Resort is going to help keep your property taxes down by contributing millions of dollars in revenue to Rosendale, to the county, and to the Rondell School District. And they're going to improve the quality of life throughout the region. One example is the just-opened Williams Lake Rail Trail. The chamber is impressed with the developers' pledge to maintain the legacy of Williams Lake as a partner in our community. For the chamber, that means they'll be supporting our existing businesses and not their profits. And let me speak to the matter of tourism in our region also and about the community character of Rosendale. Historically, the most prevalent and steadfast base for the economy of our region is tourism. It's been the mainstay of our region since the Catskill Mountain House was built in 1823. Whether in bungalow colonies, campgrounds, sporting houses, small inns, or the wonderful Williams Lake Hotel, accommodations for visitors from the city desiring outdoor recreation and escape from the metropolitan bustle have been the mainstay of our economy. That is our history, that is our character, and it shaped the lives of the families who lived and work here. Tourism, then, is both the region's past, but also its present, a $500 million impact on our economy last year, and without question, its future as well. With that in mind, there should be no question that the proposed project is in keeping with the community character of Rosendale. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Next on our list is Carl Chipman. Supervisor Carl Chipman.
Yes, we're annexing Rosendale, sorry. Thank you, Supervisor Walsh, for this opportunity to speak, and as well, members of the board. I'm here, as you're interested in, right from the southwest. I also wear many other hats. I'm also vice-chair of the Shungland Byway Coalition. I'm also president of the Ulster County Association of Town Supervisors and Village Mayors. When you're bald, you wear a lot of different hats, I guess, so. I really would like to speak in favor of this master plan for the Williams Lake project. Upon studying the master plan and your comprehensive plan, I was quite surprised at a plan of this magnitude being so much conformant to your comprehensive plan. The owners should be lauded for such conformity, for such a large project. I also find the fact that out of 779 acres, 515 acres are going to be set aside to be enjoyed by everyone forever, forever, forever undeveloped, and I think that's fantastic. I've followed this project for quite a few years now, and I've watched certain things change. I've watched them scale things back to a certain extent. And one thing I've noticed is they've listened to what others have had to say, and they've improved it as they've gone along. And I think that's a great thing, and that's why we have these public hearings in the first place. Too many times, people are so interested in what they have to say and not in what they have to hear. So, they have listened. Now, I'm going to speak as your neighbor. What's in it for us? Well, I have two resorts in my town, Hudson Valley Resort and the Pine Grove Ranch. Both of them are struggling. I have a lot of experience. I paid for my college education as a busboy waiter on weekends and during the summer at a little kosher resort on Stony Kill Road in Atwater called the Brookside Hotel. Okay? I remember the heyday, and that's quite a few years ago. I'm starting to show my age. When we had people coming here, the seniors would come up on the midweeks, we'd be packed on the weekends. When Atlantic City came along, things kind of changed. The hotels, people stopped coming. Williams Lake has always been a nice hotel, and there always was a following there. But as a destination to drive people, no. What's being proposed now is going to drive business to our region. With what's going on here, what's going on at the Nevelie, we are going to become a desired destination to travel to. What will happen? Well, people are going to start staying in my hotels. People will have more jobs. We need these jobs. Folks, we pay $30,000 a year to educate our kids in the Rondell Valley School District. They grow up, they graduate, and they leave. Now, I'm speaking as a father and a grandfather. I'd like my kids and my grandkids to be able to stay here. We need sustainable jobs, and I believe that will bring that to the area. And I urge you to approve the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Walsh, and board members. I have to say, I preface my remarks by saying that I do work for Ulster County and specifically the Health Department of tonight, and I am here exclusively to represent myself as a private citizen, with the benefit of experience as a former town supervisor, very deeply involved in zoning and conservation and environmental protections. As you might know, Martha Town, long and hard for several years to really institute world-class natural resource and conservation provisions into our zoning codes. We completely reroll our zoning code, our subdivision codes. We worked on aquifer protection, we created one of Ulster County's first farm and perfection programs, one of the first bond funds for the purchase of development rights. But one of the things that we realized that protections are really the baseline of putting a community's regulations in order to protect against the worst-case scenario type of development. The flip side of that is not a reactive type of mode, but a proactive one, which is to say, at the essence of a town plan, at the essence of zoning for a town, is really the community's vision of what it wants for itself. So that instead of development unfolding by, you know, some developer coming along from who knows where and putting a proposal on the table, and then everyone drawing lines in the sand and fighting about the result, wouldn't it be so much better for a community to articulate its vision, articulate what it wants for itself, and then work with developers who are willing to engage in that manner at the highest level of integrity and responsibility, the interaction with all the stakeholders and all the interests of the community? And that's why I think that this project represents that. Is it the perfect development? No, but there is no perfect development. But here you have, as far as I can see, a best-case scenario development. And if we don't encourage in our communities best-case scenario development, what we end up getting is far less than that. And I think that it behooves us to recognize that smart growth is really a balance. It's about putting in the right kinds of protections to make sure that we protect our natural assets and heritage for future generations, but also realize that we're living, breathing communities with real needs, and that this type of project is exactly that type of project that can speak to that benefit. That's a great, thank you.
Next on the list is Ed Hill.
First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ed Hill. I live in the town of Ulster currently. When I was born, to the age of five, I lived in the town of Rosendale, and I was raised in the town of Rowley, so. I'd like to just say a couple very brief points. I'll be well under the three minutes of canal, maybe that's somebody else. But first of all, I know there's some controversy as far as spot zoning, and I'd like to say 779 acres is not a spot. To put it on a relative size scale, I believe a square mile is only 640 acres. You're talking about something substantially larger than a square mile, and people are trying to call it a spot. I don't understand that. I think Ward Todd and March Gallagher covered this very well. We need jobs. We need more jobs. We need good jobs. And I think this project's going to provide some of those. I think the fact that it conforms with 85 or 86% of the Rosendale Comprehensive Plan is an incredible achievement. We need money. Those jobs provide money. Taxes provide money for the school district. And we want to keep public access to our resources. This project does all of that, and I think it should be approved. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list, Rich Matthews.
I want to thank the board. My name is Richard Matthews, and the town of Rosendale has been part of my life for over 50 years. Members of my family still live on James Street. I graduated from St. Peter's School in 1955, and I had a paper room on Main Street and James Street in 1952 to 1954. And for the sake of transparency, I currently live in the town of the sofas. I would like to speak to the future of Rosendale. The decisions made now will determine that future. We all are aware of the fiscal crisis that is affecting each and every one of us, town, the state, and our country. Costs at every level are going up. Services are diminishing or being eliminated. Elected officials are being forced to make difficult choices because of revenue shortfalls. Government at every level is coming and looking to create new revenues that they do not have to eliminate services taxpayers have come to expect. Rosendale is no different. The town created a comprehensive plan a few years ago. The plan took a lot of effort. It has three themes and 42 specific objectives. The process was well thought out, but many parts of the plan will need a funding source. My late father said, "It's tough to do business with an empty wagon." Every level of government needs to put money into the wagon. When I had the privilege of being chairman of the Ulster County Legislature from 1986 to 1991, we had five-year plans. Now, I dare say, County Executive Mike Hine, the County Legislature, and the towns go year to year, budget to budget because of the uncertainty of revenue. With the proposed development of Williams Lake, the town of Rosendale has a unique opportunity to pass on to future generations, your children and grandchildren, a new source of revenue. The property of Williams Lake has been and will remain private property, and such is Williams Lake is one of the largest taxpayers in the town of Rosendale. The current tax base will always be the tax base of the property. Benefits to the town, school district, and the county will come as a result of the improvements that will be made. The property is, as was mentioned, 779 acres, of which 515 is in a permanent conservation easement. It'll be forever wild, due to math. 264 acres will be developed, one-third of the total property. Two-thirds will be forever wild. Additional benefits will come from tourism, again, keeping with the comprehensive plan. I believe the Williams Lake project will give our town a revenue to keep what is unique and special in Rosendale and be able to afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Supervisor Walsh and the town board. My name is Paul Hakim. I'm a Hurley resident, but a Rosendale taxpayer, and most importantly, a project neighbor. My family owns and operates twin lakes just to the, I guess, north of the property. I have been actively, personally actively involved in planning and economic development at both the town and county level for almost 20 years. So, I want to thank all of the volunteers and staff who have been dedicated to the thoughtfully and staff who have been dedicated to the thoughtful review of this project. More importantly, I want to thank the applicant for his tenacity in going through the process for, like March said, I think it's six years since an application, and I think seven years since I first heard about the project when it was first proposed. I think that the project has headed in a great direction, that the applicant has met a lot of requirements and has amended the program to meet a lot of the community's needs. From my vantage point, I see a lot of points here that need to be clarified. I feel that the new land classification is consistent with the surrounding area and past use of the property, and the new code would not let, and more importantly, the new code would not allow for higher density, but allows for better planning. I was involved with March Gallagher and Ward Todd with the Ulster County Development Corporation. In 2010, we conducted a study and compiled a report on the effects of commercial development on ratables in your town. 13% of the Rosendale tax base is comprised of commercial property. With the Williams Lake assessment where it is currently, I am sure that the assessor is going to, we're going to see multiples of that assessment, so it's only going to benefit the town and the town's co-op physically moving forward. By contrast, the Rondau Valley School District sees 19% of its revenues from commercial properties, and the Kingston School District is closer to 30% of its revenues coming from commercial properties. I will submit this report to all of you to take a look at and review. That's also posted on the county website. The project conforms with the county economic plan, which was adopted by the legislature, as you've heard before. Those tourism dollars and those outside dollars are very important to us because we need those dollars introduced into our economic ecosystem. Williams Lake is an important economic engine to the town and the county, and it needs to be reopened as soon as possible. Five-plus years of planning and reviews is too long, and I hope to see the property open and flourishing soon. Thank you.
Eric Atkins.